All right. Our next item is the City Council Handbook. Assistant City Manager Powell. Yes.
Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is the City Council Handbook in regards to Ethics and Conflict of Interest. The code, and we're also requesting they rescind the current Code of Conduct document, which was adopted by council in May of 2017 by a narrow three to two vote. This previous document included provisions that were questioned by two of our council members, with one council member refusing to sign the document. The mayor signed the document, but then rescinded his signature in 2018. The main issue with the document were First Amendment concerns. The document did not allow for the mayor, council member, or board and commission members to use their title when endorsing a political candidate. Staff's concern centered on the enforceability of the document. Code Section 307 of the City Charter is specific on how a council member may be censured and the power that the mayor has in the enforcement of laws. Once the mayor rescinded his signature, staff was kind of in a predicament over how we could enforce this document. So in 2018, in consultation with the then city manager and attorney, we did not provide this document to any of our new council members coming in. Staff did ensure that the mayor and council have met all laws outlined by the city's municipal code, AB 1234, and in California, fair political practice is a condition. All new council members attended new council orientation provided by the League of California Cities. They each received two and a half days of training on Conflict of Interest, Ethics, Brown Act, and employee relations. Additionally, they each receive a council reference manual with written materials addressing each of these subjects. The city updates its Conflict of Interest Code every two years as required by law. Each council member must follow both the city's Conflict of Interest Code as well as the FPPC's Code. Each year, they must complete a Form 700, which reveals investments, ifs received, business ownership, et cetera. Those forms are publicly available on the city's website. The state legislature passed AB 1234, which requires all elected officials to take an ethics course every two years. This course is offered by the FPPC and the Institute for Local Government and covers when to recuse oneself from a vote. The handbook before you tonight includes the vision, mission, and values of the city. It provides a summary of the laws regulating the conduct of elected officials and lists documents important for both council and the public to be aware of. Many elements of the 2017 Code of Conduct document are contained in the new handbook. The concepts of respect, staff relationships, rules, conflict of interest, and ethics are covered in the handbook. The new handbook does not contain any provisions regarding council members and their use of titles should they support a political candidate. The only reference to censure of an elected official is that of the city's Charter, Section 307. Staff believes that the Council Handbook confirms the city's commitment to strong ethics and transparency. Myself and city attorney, Lune, are available for any questions.
Assistant City Attorney. No, Assistant City Manager Powell. Sometimes these names are so long, guys. Are there any questions? Councilmember Walton.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Powell. Or Assistant City Clerk Powell. Do these things, they all sort of switch your heads.
Yeah, that's right.
So we have AB 1234. We have the FPPC regulations. Forms 700s are out. What is covered in the not-used Code of Conduct that isn't covered elsewhere? What's in the document that we're rescinding that we are, that is not covered in either the handbook or the existing laws around ethics and conflict of interest that we all already follow?
I would... Can you answer that?
Yeah, I think that Assistant City Manager Powell did address this, and I would agree with her, that the things that are in the old code that aren't in this new handbook are what we would consider somewhat problematic portions around whether the council members can use their title in supporting other candidates. So that didn't make it into the new code. I don't think it's appropriate for the new code. And aside from that, the rules around who enforces the document. In the old code, there were some provisions that allowed the mayor to publicly bring forward issues that, again, we didn't feel were in line with the Charter. And so the City Charter dictates when censure can take place. And it was, in my opinion and the opinion of City Clerk and Assistant City Attorney Powell, that these were in conflict with the old code. And this new handbook takes those problems out, leaves all of the important rules and laws that are part of the first amendment that are all adhered to and required by law.
So for example, during the last election, when I, as a council member, endorsed one of the candidates for the seat next to me, this guy fortunately, that would be legal and ethical, but it would not have, it would have run afoul of this document that we're removing. I wouldn't have been able to say, "Councilmember Walton endorses this candidate."
That's correct. In the old document, the use of your title was not allowed. So you, Katie Walton, could have endorsed. It was a partial endorsement ban. And so you wouldn't have been able to use your title. And again, we had some, obviously, some concerns around that, some concerns were voiced to us, and we don't think it's appropriate to move forward with a questionable provision around enforcing bans.
And of course, I've taken the training multiple times as required by law. But AB 1234, because it's so basic, it's so like day-one stuff. But AB 1234 covers conflict of interest. It covers economic interest. It covers biased decision-making. Basically, anytime one of us needs to come talk to the city council or come talk to the city attorney or to know to go ahead and recuse ourselves when it comes to conflicts and decision-making, all that's covered under 1234. So my only other question is about the censure den that is possible in the City Charter in Section 307, you said? Can you describe that? How does censure happen? Or how could it happen? Or when would it be appropriate under the Charter for a censure to happen?
The Charter language is pretty short, but it's basically, it takes a vote of three council members to censure another council member. It doesn't go into detail over what the censure means, but I can tell you that it would be an agendized matter with public input and public comment taken. And then the action would have to be taken by the council to officially censure a council member.
So who can form that thought? Would it just be the mayor? Could it be anyone on council?
It's anyone on council.
And the resolution that we are rescinding, would it be, in that case, would it only be the mayor who could bring up a censure?
In the document that we're rescinding, it was very...
We're talking about rescinding. We haven't voted on.
Right, that we're recommending. Anyway, the mayor could bring it up. The public could go to the mayor. It was suggestive and not really very clear on just how the council members could do so. And then it gave the mayor power to put the item on the agenda for a hearing of some sort. But it, again, it gave more power to the mayor than what the Charter actually allows for the mayor to have. It was documented in the Code of Conduct that the mayor could then not place council members on other boards and commissions, where they represent the city, which the mayor does not have that power within the Charter. So there was just really a number of inconsistencies that the Charter or our EMC were in conflict with.
That does sound very inefficient. I'm satisfied that the existing laws cover what needs to be covered in addition to what's in the Town Charter. That wasn't a question.
Thank you. Any further questions? Councilmember, can chair us to vote?
So this was passed. I went back and viewed the 2017 council meeting that night and looked at what the debates were around it even then. And it was clear that people weren't comfortable with passing it even then. So I guess my question is that even though no one on this present council was around when that was passed, were we supposed to be...
Continue, please.
I know, but she's a mayor now. Were we supposed to be held to that?
I think that to the extent that the resolution in the code adopted pertained to the laws, of course, you are still required to adhere to all of those laws. To the extent that there were questions about some of the provisions, I would not feel comfortable, as the city attorney, trying to enforce that against the city council. So I don't know if that fully answers your question, but I guess, again, I wouldn't enforce questionable regulations against this council, and it doesn't have the force of law. The council doesn't have the ability to put into place questionable laws. So to the extent that that was mentioned in 2017, no, it's remarkable.
Thank you. I think that's what, I appreciate that. I think that's what I was asking is, and you answered the question I couldn't seem to ask properly, was it didn't have the force of law?
Thank you. I mean, let's just remember that hierarchically we have really important and complex laws coming from the state and coming from the FPPC. And again, I don't mean to drive this home too many times, but you are not setting conflict of interest rules for yourself and then rescinding them. Those rules are set elsewhere in the law, and you follow them because of that, not because of a resolution passed by a different council at a different time.
Councilmember Fernandez.
So that goes to my question. This was a policy or an ordinance, I guess?
It was an ordinance. And I really think that is important to keep in mind. Ordinances do have the force of law to the extent of the violation of them's misdemeanor under the EMC, the municipal code. The same is not true for this document that was adopted by resolution.
So thank you for clarifying that. So this resolution was approved by a previous council. And then they decided not to enforce that resolution. And so it just laid there, unenforced by previous councils because there were issues, as you've already described. And the document that we have before us essentially replaces this if we choose to appeal the current unenforced document, which is, in my perspective, comprehensive to the effect that it lays out our duties are, what the expectations are, our interaction with staff. It even states that our communications, as they're described here, are open to public record requests. So there's a transparency aspect of it. And it reiterates the laws that are already applied. Well, that's, I think, we already touched on that, AB 1234 and the others as well, Form 700, et cetera. So we have that. We behold to the city. We behold to ourselves. And there is a disciplinary process as it's outlined in the Charter for censure. I see you should, yes. So those are my questions. Is it all there, then?
Absolutely. I mean, to the extent that some of the items contained in the previous document acted as policies, there isn't, except for in the Charter, the censure, there isn't a mechanism for staff to enforce that against the council. You are elected, and so the mechanism is elections. Right? So I guess, to the extent, again, there were quote-unquote policies in this old document that maybe need followed, which I don't think those exist, except for possibly the questionable First Amendment issues. Even if there were, there isn't an enforcement mechanism for staff as against council. And the only enforcement mechanism, council against council, is censure per the Charter.
If there were to be any change to that ordinance, that would have to be done through the Charter process, which we don't. We can't change the Charter.
Charter gets changed by election.
I know. Thank you.
Councilmember Postalina.
Short question. I think we've all been leading there. I think this kind of chain-of-logic puzzle that we're talking about. But just so it's really tangible, the Charter is considered the key guidestone for the city and would be considered, you know, sort of like a hierarchy of things that we should follow would be considered more central than something like a resolution. Is that correct?
Resoundingly, yes. Okay. Seeing no more questions, we'll bring this to public comment. Mr. Gomez.
So I think what is more resounding is the actual Brown Act itself. That is superseding what you have been trying to do here, what you should be following. And it's interesting that Pam did just admit that, and Miles here on record admitted that the code was refused. There was a council member that refused to sign it, and then the mayor rescinded his signature in 2018 because of First Amendment concerns. So what happened? You touched up on it, Renee. I mean, from that point moving forward, there was no Code of Ethics or any kind of ethics guidelines for anybody to follow. So I mean, it's interesting that you can, that staff could actually make the decision that we're just not going to follow it because these two individuals in 2018, and here we are in 2023, that's not per Brown Act. Like, staff cannot make that decision. And now here we are rescinding it five years later. Renee touched up on the fact that were we supposed to be following it? Most of the language in the Code of Ethics, the one being rescinded, 2017-2025, is taken from the League of Cities. And there's actual teeth to it. There's actually, there's accountability within it. And, you know, it's for staff to be making these recommendations without taking it to the people. And here we are in 2003. So I mean, I really think that it's important that we realize that the violations have been occurring because there's been no Code of Ethics. You can't just say, "Oh, I rescinded a Form 700, and we're good." Like, there's ongoing conflicts of interest on a daily basis that all you have to do is pick up the phone and ask the FPPC, "Is this a conflict?" And to be honest with you, I actually agree that council members should be okay with endorsing it. Why not just rescind that piece out of it and then leave it as it is? Because it's a good document as it is. I agree that that could potentially affect your freedom of speech, and that's fine, you know? But for us as the people who it allows us to do, I'm glad you endorsed it. Now I know that you're part of this group. You know, I already knew that anyways because you're in people, in people, in people. So I mean, I get it. But conflicts of interest are ongoing. They're not just something that annually you submit the 700 for. So like, having an actual document that has guidelines and actually has teeth to it, as opposed to the one you're presenting and introducing right now, is interesting. So I mean, I think, I'll end on this, the fact that Miles documented here that nobody here is expected to recuse themselves. And he says that this is because the premise of the question is speculative, being that these council members are anarchists.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Thanks for waiting.
To recuse themselves. Thank you.
Thanks for waiting.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I don't have to reintroduce myself. I have a couple of questions. At the co-invention, Ethics was already there. It's supposed to be reviewed every few years. I was a Democratic ladyman back in New York, also on the school board, and we had to sign that pledge ethic here, not at the 2000s. And if you didn't, there was censure, which meant you could not vote for such a theory back. What I wanted to know is, why all of a sudden, boom, we go from, we got a Code of Ethics that we don't bother with, to now we've got a handbook that nobody has seen? I have no input. I haven't seen it. It would be nice if the public had some input on the ethics of the board and governments of the city of Eureka. And that's my question. Why did we not have any time? Well, why was there not any true public theory on the issue of Code of Ethics and the handbook? I mean, is that too much to ask? You claim you want our input, but on something this important, where we shouldn't have input, we have none. I mean, me and this gentleman are probably the only two who are really into it and pay any attention. And I personally am offended by the fact that I feel you guys don't trust us enough to give us enough information to help you make decisions. So my question is, is why did we go from a Code of Ethics that nobody bothered to sign or talk about to a handbook that we don't know the language of? We haven't seen. I think that where this should be held until a real public hearing is held on it, and public input can be brought in, and then vote it on one way or the other, whether to stay with the Code of Ethics with improvements or go with this handbook. I don't like the idea of the handbook because it sounds kind of loose and not like the Code of Ethics title because that means we know that there's at least something in writing that says how your behavior should be. Thank you.
Hello. How is everybody doing tonight, huh?
Oh, my comments are basically on the timing of this.
Ah, the city of Eureka, where the winds of change blow like the most secherity of ways. Just weeks after being called out, the council members failing to sign and follow the ethics policy, they decided it was high time for an update. Well, isn't that convenient? It's like changing the rules in the game that you might already be cheating at. Wait, there's more hilarious in store. The new ethics policy, where does it place the power in whose hands?
You asshole.
Cool. Because who needs accountability when you can simply hand over the reins to someone who's not even elected official? It's like saying, "Hey, we trust you to make more ethical decisions for all of us, but don't worry. We don't hold you accountable when things go awry." In any true comedy of errors, multiple city council members are involved in the organizations, partially funded by the city through funding of those city people. They support dismantling capitalism, anarchy, and are affiliated with extremist groups like Antifa on their Twitter page. It's like they're playing both sides of the game, or they could be anyways, sitting on the council, shaming by day, plotting the downfall of the system by night. That multitasking. Now, yeah, that's pretty much all I've got to say on this. It's just about the timing of this. Like, was this really like, this happened about five years ago, and suddenly we're going to deal about this right now? It just came right, or is it just that someone made a complaint about ethics, and now we're going to change it? And like, what the previous speaker was saying, perhaps there should be, you know, a public meeting to go over what, you know, who does hold people accountable? And, yeah, what is considered speculation? Is it speculative that somebody who moves or supports defunding the police should recuse themselves on matters about funding the police? Is that speculative? That sounds like common sense to me. Anyways, that's it. Thank you.
Hi, thanks. I wasn't going to come up and speak because I felt like this was handled pretty well by the people before me, but I just wanted to point out, since Ms. Walton had her microphone off, when Ash asked her a question, she replied, "You asshole." So if we have a Code of Conduct, I would assume that's a violation. I would like to see you do something about it, or you do something about it, or whoever is responsible for doing something about it, do something about it. That's bad behavior. It's also considered best practice to uphold the League of California Cities' Code of Conduct. So whether that's a requirement or not, it's best practice for a reason. And I'd also like to know a little bit more about what points in the 2017-2025 Code of Ethics bothers council so much? And do you agree you should be able to endorse whoever you want? But you can amend it, pull that part out. There might be another part you could amend and pull out, but just scrap the whole thing that the city or tax payers' dollars, I'm sure, played a part of, paying for somebody to work on that. Yeah. Watch your mouth.
Thank you, Jessica. Anybody else from the audience? Seeing none, do you see anybody on Zoom? I see no one. Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for discussion. Councilmember Walton.
Mayor, Mr. Teeter. I apologize for my outbursts. He said, "Who is holding them accountable?" And you are the citizen, though. That would call it a mistake.
You said, "You asshole."
Please don't yell out. And please don't yell out.
She could yell out, "You asshole," but we can't?
I did.
That was rude.
I wasn't here. I apologize.
So who is to censor you?
So is it only the citizens?
So who gets to censor you?
So we're stopping right now. We're stopping the meeting. In fact, I think we're going to take a break. We're going to take a five-minute break. Thank you.
No, it's correct. Okay. Got it. So it's okay to have the age difference.
Thank you.
Thank you. Much appreciated. How we doing? Would you like some water? Thank you, by the way. It's about the children. It's a pretty big place. Delicious.
I'm really just curious, like, if you tell me exactly, under the new code, like, who will hold people accountable versus the previous code?
So would a term and council member, Chair Stilich, and I just believe we can convene a meeting? Okay, so we are going to reconvene this council meeting. He's taking deep breaths and drank some water. We are back to, we're still discussing the City Council handbook. We were at public comment, we just finished public comment, and we're regarding that council for comments, not comments, questions, comments, a motion. Councilmember, Chair Stilich.
So when this, when this issue came up, I went ahead and went back, I talked with our city attorney and said, you know, we must have heard. So I went back, I watched that, and went, I read through it, and compared the two things that we're talking about, our former, this former document, as well as the handbook that we're talking about now. And in short, I did my due diligence, so that I felt like I would understand what we were discussing. And that included a lengthy conversation with our city attorney about it as well. So I feel very comfortable saying that I think the document is a redundant document, and I feel comfortable using that word. Because we already have, and what that handbook does is that it lays out all of these laws that already exist, as our city attorney mentioned earlier. These are laws that already exist, and these are things that were already held to, there are trains we've already done, there are things that we've already signed, there are stuff that we have to declare. And it lays out, and I think actually really, really well, and I appreciate staff complying on this, it lays it out in a really easily clear-to-understand format that would be very accessible to the public as well, which I really appreciate. And so I, you know, I would say, you know, if members of the public are concerned about it, I believe this May second, two thousand seventeen, you can go back and you can watch the whole thing. I think it starts at about twenty-four minutes and the discussion does, and you can find out what the concerns were with it and what the issues are. I don't have any concerns moving forward with this. I think it's unfortunate the way that this came up, and I acknowledge that that doesn't look right, and I understand that. And I think this is one of those things where unfortunately sometimes the veneer of something just gives you the wrong impression. And I think this is one of those situations where it's on the surface, if someone doesn't take the time to listen to what we're saying, or to look at these documents, or to watch that house meeting, they may walk away from this thinking that basically we're saying that we want to disband or abolish some Code of Ethics. When in reality, we're held by much bigger laws, even than just this little code. We have our charter, we have state laws, we have federal laws, and so there are, all of these things are already in place. And, and so that already exists. And if anything, going to that one little part about the censure, that would have changed it, where currently, if I understand right, council has some leeway, and that would have changed it, and where it would have just been the mayor. So if anything, I think this is like, it was a disempowering document in some ways. So I'm just going to put that out there. I understand how it looks, but our responsibility is always best practices, and I think our best practices is this handbook, regardless of how that may appear. And I think I'm perfectly happy to have that conversation, perfectly happy to point that stuff out and to kind of go over those facts. And I think if people look at those different things that we have to do, maybe one, two, three, four is an intense thing that makes you feel afraid to even like oppose or something, like, I mean, truly. And so I know I walk out of it thinking, I have no idea what I can do, so I'm just not going to do any of this. And that's the point. That's, that's the point of these laws, is to make sure that we're hamstrung as, you know, elected officials, so that we don't do things that we should be doing, or that there's accountability for that. No document that was put together that people didn't like, and so some sign and some didn't, is going to do more than those existing laws through the FPPC and so forth, so just felt that I need to say that.
Is that a motion?
I think it was a tirade.
Oh.
I'm not sure. I could make a motion. I feel perfectly comfortable with this adopting the status quo, so I don't know how to make that motion.
Can it be staff recommendation, or does she need staff recommendation?
So I say, I'm making a motion to adopt the staff recommendation.
I'd like to say, and let me go with you. Yes, you may.
Thank you, Councilmember, and Chair Stilich, for articulating what I was too heated to say. And I apologize again to the mayor and to Mr. Teeter, and to the public for losing my cool, and lowering the discourse when we should be elevating the discourse with information and with perspective.
Let's move past the line.
Thank you. I appreciate that this was coming before us. I just want to say, throughout my time at council, we've, you know, rescinded or fielded replaced documents many, many times. This is a fairly normal part of city government, is that, you know, as, as we learn and grow as a populace, we repeal and replace things, and that's healthy democracy, you know? And I appreciate if there was public input. This is actually the sanction time to give public input into the document, into the way laws are formed, and so this is exactly the process that's supposed to happen. I, you know, I personally think that, you know, there are many reasons that problematic documents are changed, you know, throughout the course of government, and, you know, often those are brought to our attention by, by citizens in various ways, and so this is also one of those instances where a citizen brought forward something that, you know, was problematic, and we have an opportunity to change it, so I'm just really grateful for this opportunity, for the discourse around it.
Thank you. Councilmember Panetta?
Thank you. Councilmember, Chair Stilich, I want to thank you for putting it as, as you did, because what it comes down to is that this was something, I think that's, you know, as Councilmember Costello put it, the logic puzzle that we engaged in earlier with the discourse with staff, is that if not us, then who? What it comes down to is that this was something that was done by previous councils, or rather previous councils to execute. Here we are with two competing documents, and then as you put out, one that really bestows more power and authority to the mayor that is outlined by the Charter, which is, again, as it was put earlier, our guiding document for the city. If there's change that wants to be made from that, I'm not going to say it's simple, but there's a process for it, you can put it on the ballot. So, yeah, I, moving forward with this, I think we're good. I'm comfortable with it. It already outlines what we have to follow, as it's been stated, I don't know how many times we could say one, two, three, four tonight, unless somebody else wants to take that on. But we're, we received our certificates for it, we've all filed Form seven hundreds, we've done our sexual harassment training, we've done our Brown Act training, and so we're compliant, and I don't think, to the best of my perspective, I don't think anything's violated that appeared at the moment.
Councilmember Bauer?
I feel like I have a whole lot more to say about, I think I appreciate the thoughtful discussion about this issue. And I just want to say, I feel like there's been a lot of, you know, things said about council members and supposed affiliations with, you know, anarchy or whatever. I don't know if people understand that we just passed a budget that fully funds our police force and our firefighters, and it's just important for people to understand that, that that's what we're doing, we're doing the business of the city. And to equate anarchism, anarchy with, with destruction of government, which we're showing you that it functions. You can be a lot of different things, you can be a Democrat, you can be a Republican, anything, and you can still contribute to how the city functions and to the betterment of the city. So I appreciate working with you all, and I think this is a smart path forward, what we're doing today, and I appreciate you making a motion. So, thank you.
Mayor, Councilwoman, I just want to apologize to you for the timing of this document. I was the staff member at the time that's still here, and, and staff at the time felt like we were making the best decision for the city in how we handle it. In two thousand twenty-one, I did the board and commission handbook, which addressed the board and commission section of this document, and it was, you know, on the radar to get a council handbook done right after that, and of course, those things, you know, best intentions. So the timing of, you know, of Mr. Gomez's claim and bringing that Code of Conduct forward was just a really, not so much a gentle reminder that that needed to be addressed, but I took the time and we were able to get that handbook done. So my apologies for putting you in a position that you shouldn't have been in, so thank you.
We have a motion and a set up. Please vote.
Unanimous, yes, so the motion carries.
So moving forward to future agenda items.